At this point, I wonder if I could have a motion to come back into regular session to discuss the items that are listed on our meeting agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Alderwoman Painter. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Alderwoman Schmidt. Madam clerk, would you call the roll and that is for us to come back into regular session to discuss these items in public. Thank you.
Audemar Bray?
Yes.
Audemar Mathie?
Yes.
Audemar Sage?
Yes.
Audemar Malamoy?
Yes.
Audemar Burgess?
Yes.
Audemar Painter?
Yes.
Audemar Schmidt?
Yes.
Audemar Black? And Audemar Harmon?
Yes.
Okay. All right. We're going to go ahead and start with item 6A, Presentation Annual Workers' Compensation Report by Mike Nugent of Nugent Consulting. We have approximately 10 minutes and then about 10 minutes of council discussion. Mr. Nugent? Thank you very much.
It's going to be a joint presentation by myself and the City Safety and Risk Manager as well as Mike.
Are we merging A and B then?
Yeah, we're just going to flip-flop it if you don't mind, all right?
Okay, that's fine. So Alex Ross, just to let the record show, Alex Ross and Mike Nugent will be jointly presenting, and then we will have council discussion before adjourned. Know how to get the presentation on the overhead?
Mayor, if I could, as they're getting ready for this, as many of you may recall, about eight years ago, the city made a change from being part of a kind of single-party risk management pool, the old RIMCO model, to going back and being self-insured. The, probably the most single-expensive, most expensive part of our annual insurance has to do with workers' compensation. And since that time, one thing we've tried to share with the council annually is an update on what's been the track record, the actual experience with not only claims, injuries, the incurred costs, how much it has cost us. We do carry reinsurance for large claims, but most of the smaller items are carried by the city. And as Michael Nugent will share again with you, but, you know, even to buy a workman's comp insurance, State Illinois as an example, for police officers, firefighters, the reinsurance or the insurance doesn't even start till you hit $550,000. It's $450,000 for other employees. So when you look at a lot of this data tonight, you'll be seeing these are the costs that we have to ensure that we set aside within our budget and through fees charged to each of the departments to cover not only premiums, but a lot of these costs and expenses that are below the so-called self-insured retention level. But, and secondly, in the past, it's been usually Mike Nugent. Tonight, we're having Alex Rosas join this presentation to talk about what progress we have made in trying to reduce injuries and enhance the overall safety culture of the city and what we're doing and the progress we've made, which I think is pretty phenomenal, as you hear tonight of the progress we have made, thanks to Alex and many other people within the city. So with that, are you ready to begin?
Yeah, it seems like the technical difficulty has been overcome. So, thank you, David. I appreciate it. So, thanks for having me, first of all. What I'd like to do is kind of give you guys kind of a balcony view at the strategy we're using and the strategy that I feel pretty much any organization needs to utilize from a safety risk management standpoint in order to kind of turn around their safety culture and turn around their safety performance. So essentially, I think that there's nine real key components. You know, I'm not going to get too much into the weeds just because there is so much difference from department to department, so that each department has its own challenges. But from a very high-level perspective, the first of which is that we really need to show, you know, that we're committed to get that buy-in at all levels of the organization, right? So we can do that a number of different ways. The first of which is we have to verbally express that to everybody in the organization, you know? David's done that many times. All the directors, all the city leaders have done that numerous times. You know, two is we have to set safety at the number-one priority. I go back to my second interview with the city with David Hales, and he had asked me what my vision was for the city as far as safety went, you know? And it wasn't, I didn't call to mind, you know, the number of procedures or the number of trainings, although that's important, you know? I think just the word priorities really sums it up, you know? And David assured me that all the city employees' safety and health is number-one priority at all times. So I always make a point to share that with everybody whenever I'm out in the field and, you know, talking with folks. And then lastly, this is where the rubber meets the road, you know? We need to actually spend the money, devote that time and resources towards employee safety. You know, so we made some good strides as far as the safety culture goes, but I've heard a couple of times where we weren't able to do something a certain way, you know? Folks would say, "Well, I thought we were all about safety, Alex. Why did we make this choice? Why did we make that choice?" And it kind of causes large setbacks, to be honest with you, you know? So I think as long as we stay that course, you know, and keep safety as a number-one priority, we'll, you know, continue to be on that good path. Secondly, us versus them mentality, right? That's, you know, you would think that that would be pretty standard stuff in a union environment, but it doesn't need to be that way, you know? A lot of times when I talk with folks out in the field, they always say, "Yeah, so I hear they're thinking about doing this," or "I hear they're thinking about doing that," but I don't hear a lot of "we." There's no "we're going to be looking at doing this," or "we are thinking of operating a certain way," you know? So, again, a number of ways we can address that, you know? We need to treat employees as colleagues and equals, you know? We need to include them in any kind of decision-making, you know? So if there is some kind of impact on a decision that'll be made down to the working folks in the front line, then we need to pull those folks into those decisions, right? We formed numerous safety committees throughout the departments to give folks a voice and, you know, dedicated time to voice their concerns and, you know, voice their ideas, you know? These are the folks that know their jobs better than I will, better than you will, probably, you know? So we need to respect the fact that they are the subject matter experts nine times out of 10 and really, you know, get that feedback from them. And then we need to spend time in the field talking with folks about safety, not just myself, but, you know, the supervisors, the leaders. You know, we need to really bridge that gap between admin and frontline employees. That's very important. Number three, all right? So safety has to be embedded at the forefront of everything we do, you know? So we can't just say one time, "Hey, safety is our priority," and then never visit it again. It needs to be embedded into all our meetings, into all our shift interfaces, into all our, you know, anything we do, it needs to be embedded in there. So not only, you know, having one particular safety topic in mind to benefit from that safety topic, you know? So you'll also benefit from kind of getting it ingrained in people that safety is the first order of business all the time. If we start every meeting talking about safety, folks know that, hey, this is still the number-one priority. Number four, we need to correct any operating practices, right? So we need to seek out what the best practices are through other municipalities, see who's doing it the best and why aren't we doing it that way? You know, we need to do any kind of gap analysis in trainings, make sure that folks have the adequate training necessary to do their jobs, right? We need to make sure that folks are able to hit the ground running when they do start, right? So we've started this comprehensive orientation that we do every Monday. It's about four or five hours long, and I cover six to seven, 16 to 17 different topics to really give, you know, folks the bare-bones kind of tools they need to kind of hit the ground running. Number five, facility equipment, right? So we know that we need to be fiscally responsible, right? So if anybody in here has ever worked for private industry, I was at DuPont for a number of years, you know? Money coming out of their ears, right? So they're able to purchase the Cadillac of everything, right? We can't do that, you know? We know that we can't get the Cadillac, all the bells and whistles on everything, but we need to have the basic working equipment necessary to let folks do their jobs in a safe and efficient manner, you know? That's important. If you've gone out and visited with a lot of departments, you know, some of their equipment needs to be replaced, you know? We need to spend that time and money in that area. Number six, crack any compliance deficiencies, right? So this is just as simple as making sure all our I's are dotted, all our T's are crossed, all our lowercase J's are dotted, right? So we lessen that risk exposure, liability exposure. Number seven, so when an incident or near miss does occur, right, we need to really look into it and figure out what the root cause was, you know? So if you look at this pyramid here, you'll see something that William Heinrich put together. He's an industrial safety pioneer. So what he did is he looked at tens of thousands of workplace incidents, and he found that for every 330 incidents, only one of those was a major injury. 29 were minor injuries, and 300 of those were near misses, right? So if you look at this real iceberg under-the-water kind of scenario, if we only look at the major and minor injuries, we're really missing a great opportunity to make an impact on employee safety, you know? So, so again, the focus here should not be on, "I need to figure out whose fault this was so I can discipline them," you know? That's not why we do this. We do this to figure out what happened, why it happened, and make sure it doesn't happen again. Okay, so we found the root cause, right? So if we hold that information only with the immediate managers or city officials or a closed-knit group, you know, there's a limited impact that those folks can make, you know? We really need to communicate what happened, why it happened, why it's not going to happen anymore to everybody, you know? So you'd be surprised at the large gap that there was in the amount of OSHA recordable injuries there were and the amount of injuries that folks thought there were. So when I say OSHA recordable injury, I want to differentiate now between a claim and an OSHA recordable injury. So a claim is anything that will generate any kind of payment, right? So if I, you know, bumped my elbow and I said, "You know, I better get an X-ray of that," and an X-ray is taken, and they say, "You're fine. You can go back to work tomorrow." Okay, that's still a claim because it generates some sort of monetary fee, right? But an OSHA recordable injury is an injury that's more serious than first aid. So things like broken teeth or sprains or strains, if somebody has to be off work, if somebody has to have any kind of prescription, you know, those kinds of injuries, right? So I was looking at one particular department when I first started here, and this area had 41 OSHA recordable injuries the previous year. So I just wanted to get a gauge for how all the frontline folks, how many injuries they actually thought that they had, you know? And just about everybody I asked, you know, "How many injuries do you, you know, think we had last year?" Most folks would say four, five, three, you know? And it's like, "Come on, you have 41." I mean, seriously, no, there's just a vast, a vast gap there, right? So what you see on the next slide, this is something that I put together when I first started here. It's just a way to kind of get that information out to everybody, not just the supervisors. It's all anonymous. There's no names. There's no dates. There's no body parts, nothing like that. But what it does, it summarizes what happened, what we initially found during the investigation, what we can do to improve the situation, make sure it doesn't happen again. And I've been doing this for a while, and every department is doing this, with the exception of police, just because they have some different confidentiality kind of things going on with their. So on the next slide, you'll see these different safety boards that are posted throughout the city. You know, these are at all the fire departments. This is Public Works, Water Department, Water Treatment Plant, all the different areas. And what it is, it serves as a central depository for these incident communications, as well as some other kind of safety information, metrics I keep, those kinds of things. So it gives folks an opportunity with their supervisor to review this information, look and see what happened, and kind of, you know, think, "How can this apply to me? How can this make my job safer?" So if you look at this one, you know, most departments will keep the previous floor up there. So we have one from the fire department going up, one from Public Works, another one from Public Works. On the very top is Miller Park Zoo, you know? And anytime an incident occurs, I'll go out, take photos, talk with folks, and then I'll send this out to, you know, David, Steve, all the directors, all supervisors, and everybody posts it in all their areas and has an opportunity to talk about it. And lastly, right, we're never going to be satisfied until there's zero injuries, right? Because that's the only number that's acceptable, right? So we have to continuously improve, so we have to evaluate, reevaluate, continuously look at what we do to make sure that we're doing things, you know, on the up and up and with the best standards that are out there. Anybody ever hear the phrase, "Well, that's the way we've always done it," right? That's the way, so, all right? Well, maybe at the time when we started doing it that way, that was the best way to do it, but that may not be the best way now to do it. So we need to make sure that we're on top of this and still looking at things on a very frequent basis. So I'm a firm believer that if you're not measuring something, you're not improving it, right? So I try to hold myself to a standard where I compare myself and everybody else to our previous, you know, performance. So even if we have a good year last year, we want to do even better this year, so we hold last year as our, as our working standard, right? So I focus on two things. I focus on the number of OSHA recordable injuries that occur in a calendar year, and I focus on the number, the dollar amount of incurred worker comp costs that occur within a calendar year. And that difference, that differs from Mike. He's focused more on the fiscal year. I'm focused more on the calendar year because that's when OSHA reporting is based on a calendar year, so it makes sense. And I do that because I think this is really the best key performance indicator, you know, for us to gauge what programs or things that we're implementing, how they're actually impacting us, you know? If I just looked at the worker comp costs that were paid, you know, a lot of these claims don't get paid out fully until a year after the fact. So there's this kind of catch-up factor involved. So if you measure it that way, you're never really going to get a good snapshot. You're always going to kind of be behind, and it's kind of a hard measurement. So if you do incurred cost calendar year, OSHA recordable injuries calendar year, you'll see similarities in the reduction. So let's look at 2015 versus 2016. So this is a dashboard that I developed, and I post this dashboard everywhere. So you can see in 2015 versus 2016, OSHA recordable injuries were down 10%, okay? Pretty basic metric. Now, if you go onto the next slide, you can see what kind of trend we're on as far as the incurred costs. So from 2014, 2015, 2016, you can see that we're incrementally stepping down approximately 10% every year. If you were to look at the work comp costs that were paid, it wouldn't really reflect that because of that catch-up kind of factor. But if you look at this, this shows how we're actually performing, right? So these work comp incurred costs, you know, they all include anticipated medical indemnity, legal expenses. What the claims adjuster feels that this claim will cost us over the entire life of it. So now this is the actual working metric, so I want to give you guys the up-to-date metric. This is the one that I update every single month, that I talk about every month, that I post every month. And this gives us timeframe last year, January to June, versus timeframe this week, this year, January to June. So you can see we're doing a lot better, right? This time last year, we had 48 OSHA recordable injuries. Right now, we have 20, so that's a reduction of 58%. So that's 28 fewer people that, you know, may have had some kind of injury that caused them to be off work, you know? 28 fewer people that, you know, maybe they couldn't play ball with their kid for a while, or they couldn't, you know, whatever it is, 28 fewer people had a, had a serious injury. And then lastly, where are we at as far as worker comp incurred costs compared to last year? So you can see by this time in 2016, we had incurred almost $818,000. Right now, we're at a little over $534,000. So a reduction of 34.5%, give or take. So, you know, so again, we're not going to see this money right away, but as we play catch-up and those payments are made and these claims are settled, we should see these funds at some point in time. So I know I went over. I apologize, but unless you have any comments or questions for me, I'll turn it over to Mike Nugent to kind of take a little bit of deeper dive into it. Yeah, you're welcome.
Mike?
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is there a particular time of the year where injuries occur or a particular time of the day where they occur?
I would say the majority would be in wintertime. That's just because of the increased slip-and-fall chances, yeah.
What about time during the day?
I haven't dove that deep into a time of day, but I surely can get you those metrics if you want. If you guys have any parameters that you'd like to see me, you know, put together, I can surely do that. Yeah, just let me know.
Thank you. So I have two reports that we're going to take a walk-through. We separate the claims data for work comp and then all other, all other being auto accidents, property damage, slips and falls on sidewalks, that type of thing. So I'm going to start with the property and liability. Figure out how to work this. Sorry. Let's try that again. Okay, we'll do it the old-fashioned way, manually. So the, on the property and casualty side, we're going to measure two things. One, we're going to talk through some department data on the number of claims, which again, I, we, sometimes we can't control the ultimate cost. And what Alex is focused on, and what I think all of my clients tend to focus on, is if we can reduce the number of claims, we ought to reduce our expenditures as well. So from, for the five-year period, May 1st, 2012 through April 30, 2017, you had 771 auto accident or auto claims, 558 general liability claims, 79 property, and 52 related to contact with law enforcement. And you can, sorry, the pie chart right there. Let's see if we can get this better. This is just the auto data, and this is, again, for the same five-year policy period. If you focus on the chart, following Alex's results on work comp, safety crosses a lot of different bounds. And so if you're, if you're following what he's trying to do and the departments are following what he's trying to do, it's going to cross over into the auto, into the property, into the general liability as well. So you've had great results. You've seen a reduction over that period of time, starting in 2013 through the, through the just-ended fiscal year. Next is general liability. Again, these are like slips and falls on sidewalks and other bodily injury-type cases, same thing. You saw a fairly significant number of claims in 1314, and then significant improvement the three subsequent years, with the last year that just ended being the best year in quite a while. Property, this is damage to city-owned property, same thing, 1314 bad year, and then three really good years, with this most recent year being an outstanding year. So, and then contact with law enforcement, same thing. 1213 was the worst year, and then you've seen improvement every year, including really good results for the most recent fiscal year. This is frequency by department. Public Works having the most, which makes sense. They're out, you know, filling potholes, and most of the sidewalks slip and fall, and those type of things end up being categorized as Public Works claims. So nothing in this data really is surprising. The second part of this equation, so we talked about number of claims, okay, what does that translate into expenditures for claims for the city? So over that same five-year period we talked about, you spent $858,000, and that's, again, on an incurred basis. That's not the expenditure. It's what we ultimately think claims that occurred in that five-year period will cost the city. You had $858,000 in auto, $400,000 in law, $400,000 in general, and then 134 in city property damage. So from a general liability standpoint, same results. The number of claims go down, our results have gone down. And although they ticked up a little bit in the last two years, it's really insignificant compared to how they were in 1213 and 1314. So again, still very good results. Same thing with the auto. You had kind of a really poor trend from '12 through the end of '15, and then very positive results the last two years, back towards where you were in '1213. Law enforcement, same results, from some pretty significant years in '1213 and 1314 to almost nothing in the past fiscal year. Property, property tends to go up and down kind of with, with weather, believe it or not. And so we had pretty good winter in '16 and '17, so these results kind of stack up with '1213, 1314. But property damage tends to be a very small line item for us from a cost standpoint. And then this is the overall for those five years. You can see that, again, really positive trend starting in 1314 to what it was in the most recent year. And this is the expenditure by department. Police, Public Works, Parks and Rec on the top. Again, nothing, nothing unusual to me in these, in these figures. So that's the work comp, or the, excuse me, that's the liability. Now, let's go to work comp. And again, Alex's efforts are work comp, but they cross over. But I'm expecting we're going to see similar results here, right? So first table, sorry. First table is the same thing we did before. We're going to count claims. So you can see a fairly, a positive trend. It's not significant reduction, but it is from where we were in '1213 in 145 total claims to 108 in the most current year. And again, we count claims differently than OSHA recordables, but this is really positive. These are cases that were called into our Nurse 3I service and resulted in some sort of medical care. So this tells me that Alex, Alex's plan is working right now. This is specifically Fire Department. Again, you've seen improvement, slight tick-up last year, and that repeated this year, the same number, but that's more positive than it was in '1213 and 1314. This is Police, same thing, couple of fairly bigger years, but the last couple of years, or the, we've had really two out of the last five years pretty good, although the trend from last year to this year has ticked up a little bit. So that's something I think you got, you got, we got to pay a little attention to. Public Works, same thing. We've kind of go up and down with Public Works. Public Works, again, with work comp, tends to be driven by weather. If we have bad weather in December, January, February, we get a lot of slip and falls for our Public Works guys out, out in the street. So we've had good weather two out of the last three years, and that shows up in this data as well. So some of it is luck and weather. This is the Water Department. Again, positive trend in Water Department over the last four years. Same thing with, this is a summary of all other departments, which is mostly administration, not many claims there to look at. Sorry, go back for a minute. So this slide, sorry if it's small and hard to read. This is the total expenditure for work comp on an incurred basis for those five years. One point, almost $2 million in '1213, and then a tick-up, and we're, and then the worst year being '15, '16 in this past year, which is still kind of green. We, there might be some development in here, but significant improvement in the last year. This is Fire. Fire, pretty stable over the last four years, averaging kind of around just over $1 million in work comp expenditures. This is Parks and Rec and Police. Police, improvement in '14, '15, and then some deterioration, which follows that claims data, the number of claims data. So again, something maybe to pay a little attention to. Public Works, bad '15, '16, but really good three, the other four years of this five-year measure. Water, same thing. And this is all of the departments. Again, not much expenditure there. There's some of the work comp data that I'll save you from the detail of. It is pretty straightforward stuff. We have an older workforce, so we get a lot of strains. We get a lot of contusions from bumping into stuff. That's more Public Works. We get a lot of backs, knees, and shoulders from Fire because they spend a lot of time lifting patients out of difficult places. Those lifts are great, but sometimes you can't get the lifts into where the patient is. So we see a lot of strains, strains, contusions, and then our, if you look at this, the majority of our claims are, tend to be backs, knees, and shoulders, which if you go to any other governmental agency, you're going to see the same sort of data. Questions?
Questions? Yes, Alderwoman Halm.
Sorry, raised my hand like I'm in third grade. The, it seems like in several of the departments, the '15, '16 numbers were up. Any idea why that might have been? There were at least three departments that they were significantly up.
I can kind of touch on some of that. You know, as, as some of these oddball things kind of occur, you know, it's some of the things that we need to learn from the experience, right? So if somebody has some kind of odd scenario that caused them to be injured, you know, that's already in the past and it's done. So we, so we'll actually do the investigation, you know, pull the group together, and then try to make sure that doesn't happen again. So that's pretty typical with an organization that hasn't had that kind of incident communication in the past, you know. We don't know what we don't know, you know. But hopefully, we can minimize those learning experiences, you know. We, we try to be proactive as possible and teach folks, you know, the right, proper ways to do things. But, you know, sometimes we'll get that kind of oddball stuff that, you know, we just don't, we don't have dedicated time to cover, you know, how to properly lift this Art Deco piece of, you know, furniture into this thing. It's kind of weird scenarios, so.
No, it just seemed like there was, you know, for that one year, they had to have three different departments be significantly up. I just didn't know if, anyhow, thank you.
Yeah. Other questions? Okay. Thank you very much, both of you. Appreciate your help. Thanks. At this point, we're ahead of schedule, and, boy, that is unusual. Do we have a motion to adjourn? And then we begin township in, geez, about 23 minutes. We can get to Ohio and back. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Alderwoman Bray. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Halm. All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned until township at 6:30. Thank you.